Sketch with a visual simulation of what it would look like from each of the homeowners that would be affected. And they said they would do that. They would also show it with buffers. And I asked if there was a cap on the cost for buffers and screening. I said, you could put berms up and then let's say 12-foot mature trees. They said the cost was not a factor. The homeowner can, if they put it on the homeowner's property, they can pick whatever they want to be put in. But she would recommend an eight-foot height because anything bigger than that, it has, you know, a high depth ratio, I guess.
That's my understanding from other, other.
Yeah. So although I put in an 18-foot river birch two years ago, it looks great, just saying. So.
I think they're, I think the eight-foot number is probably more like evergreen or something.
Yeah, and they'll put in maple trees, evergreens, they'll put in whatever you want. They'll put in berms and then put the trees on top, which in effect are going to give you like double the height of whatever. So just throwing that out there for informational purposes. All right.
Hey Cory.
Hey.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can we ask them to potentially compensate neighbors for, I don't know, loss of property value? Is that something, is that, is that something we could do?
There are such things as property value protection plans, which are usually structured where if somebody puts their house up for sale and you can demonstrate that you got less for the house because of the project that they make up the shortfall. That's usually how they're structured. I have not seen one for a solar project before. Usually that agreement would be with the town and it would, you would have a certain radius, let's say, that would be eligible. They're common for things like landfills.
Right. I would figure solar farm could fit into something like that, though.
Like I said, I haven't seen it before, but it's, that would be the mechanism by which I could see it potentially done.
Is there a time limit on that too? Like for instance, the project's been there for 15 years and somebody goes to sell their house 15 years later?
Usually, yeah, usually there are things like that in there. I could provide an example of one, which is more for landfill, but I think structurally it's a similar type of arrangement. But yeah, there's a timeframe put on it because at some point the market's shift.
Because if I remember correctly from two months ago, that was a major concern brought forth by a lot of our neighbors.
Yeah.
Said, you know, my property value is going to drop. I don't want to look at it, no one else, if I try to sell my house, no one else is going to want to look at it. So, you know, my property value is going to decrease. But if we could get some type of potential compensation for a situation that arose, you know, if you wanted to put a, I don't know, year limit on it, that's fine, but I think that could be a swing.
And usually, and usually the.
Yeah. On that topic, I mean, if my neighbor wanted to put another garage on their property and I felt that that.
You know what, we're really not speaking with the audience, I'm sorry. Because this is going to be a long night to begin with and this, that will honestly just drive it down more.
So.
And this is called a what, a property value?
Property value protection plan.
Okay.
Usually subsequent sellers are not eligible usually because the, the price is built in to the deal that they had with the ones who were there.
Right.
So the, the market has adjusted, they've paid less, right? So they don't, they're not entitled to double that, let's say.
But it would initially protect the.
It would protect those who were there at that point in time.
Okay, yeah.
Because they're the ones who, in theory, if there's a reduction in value, they're the ones who have been.
Yeah, wouldn't care.
Been cared because of it, right?
So how would we pitch that to our, to our, to ourselves?
I think it would be along the lines of, you know, there's been broad concern about property value. I think the studies are mixed on that, but presumably, you know, there's, there's concern about property value.
Yeah, okay.
We were trying to understand what options there might be to address that. One is mitigating the impacts, right? So screening, noise, whatever other physical issues being present. But is, is there a way to ensure that the people who are there now aren't negatively impacted from a property value standpoint? Such as a property value protection plan?
Okay.
And like you said, that, they tend to be, like landfills, almost every landfill has one of them. There's a circle, the one I'm familiar with for various reasons, has like a circle of, I think of my own.
Great. So we had asked Dwight to come up with a resolution template, I guess, for things to be taken into consideration for a resolution. Not saying there's going to be anything tonight, but it's included in your packet so that you have something to look at and think about.
I know it treated, like you said, as a guide.
Yes.
This is my interpretation of the law and the standards. Mr. Daley submitted what I would call a brief this afternoon and I, I quickly read it. I, I would like to spend a little more time with that, it's well written.
And that's also.
I've got essentially two briefs in the record now to be compared to, so maybe I'll have more arguments sometime.
Yeah, it's like worse than book club, just saying.
Sorry.
There's a lot of reading, we've done a lot of reading. And it's not to say anything about the stuff that's been emailed. All right, so what do you guys, what do you, what are your questions for our esteemed colleagues here?
Do you have any other observations while you're visiting the property, right? I don't know how bad it was over there.
You just got the all open field and everything and now you're taking it, now you have to put all that screening up. You're taking something that's natural and you're enclosing it. You've got all your sound deadening and stuff that, to me, if you're just out there walking, I mean, it was beautiful back then. You know, and it's like you're going to take the tillable farmland and everything and you're turning it into unusable. I mean, it's, and the definition of farm is not the harvest, like, I looked at several places. It's animals, it's fruits, it's vegetables. It's stuff that could be disposed of on the property if something went wrong. That you cannot do. So to me, that's not a farm. You're taking farmland and turning it into commercial wasteland. That's the way I see it. It's, by my understanding, it's already done. They can do it if they do it inside their range of.
It's approved use, it's a permitted use.
We are not able to squash it. We can contain it. We can tell them, no, you cannot go outside that boundary then. That's my understanding, correct?
If, if they didn't need a variance, that would be a specially permit, allowed specially permitted use in the town.
So, and it's already been passed through, so it's, now they're going for is property boundary.
Correct.
It's basically what we get the vote on, we don't get the vote on stopping.
Correct. I would, I would look at it as, you know, what is the impact of the variance, right? So you have certain community impacts if they did, you know, the baseline allowable impact, let's say, is a 500-foot setback, right? So in that increment between the 500 and 125, what is, what is, what is the effect of that?
Right, so you're taking this thing now and expanding it into bigger area than to keep it within the 500 then.
Yes.
Fine, you got it through, go, stay there then. You know, it's.
So, so the, so that, that increment, let's say, it does two things, right? One, it affects the distance from residences on the properties to the project. It also allows the project to be bigger, right? Because you have a 50-acre maximum size as well, which is also, which is also the other variance.
Right, and they want to go up to the.
You know, geometrically, right, if you, if you take a 50-acre square parcel, the biggest project you could put on, a 50-acre square parcel that beats all the 500-foot setbacks is about nine acres, right? The way that code is constructed.
I guess I have a concern. Right now, we have negotiation topic. We can say, we want berms, we want trees, we want this, we want compensation. If, if we say no, what are the ramifications that they would sue us and win?
This is just purely a beginning. And when, it would be because we, the likely reason would be because the standard was just, or the application of that standard wasn't lightened enough to, you know, it would be, it would be because the public utility necessity standard applied. And it either, the, and I, I admit that the standard for an area variance versus a use variance is less clear. That the, the standard applied either wasn't correct or the application of that standard wasn't correct, right? So in, in either way, it would say you, you were too stringent and you should have been less. And then, and then, you know, would they, would a court grant the area variance? Area variance is pretty kind of gray, right? So they might go back and say, the terms reman, just send it back to you saying, reevaluate this, but within these parameters.
And then you lose negotiation power, or no?
You probably have better negotiation power now then with them. Because you would have, they would have the backing of a more efficient court, right? And that's, it's a little bit of a, there's a new case law, there's, you know, like I said, mostly cases of use variances, so that's my view.
And the board just received Mr. Daley's submission this evening, which none of you have seen yet, the guarantee.
Send your packet.
So I think that's something that needs attention.
Yeah.
Which one was that?
It's the big packet.
If you need a copy, I have it readily available.
This is going to be so much reading tonight, hundreds of minutes of emails.
This one, okay.
Sounds like we're going to go first.
This is your answer?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Wish you were sitting next to me.
We did talk a little bit today with the homeowner as far as reducing the size so that they wouldn't need the variance. That first section, as we drove back, right, we talked about like, hey, what would it mean if you were to just remove this section so that you didn't need, so that you weren't so close to the White House and all these, you know, different things. That was the one, that first section is the one that needs the most variance. And so I think Molly is supposed to get us information back as far as how many kilojoules or whatever.
Kilowatts.
Kil, thank you, the kilowatts, that they would be losing off of that section if it were removed. Because what I understand, they have, how did this, how did it go, 3.4 kilojoules?
Kilowatts.
Kilowatts.
Sorry.
Mega watts, mega watts.
I'm going to ask them that question though, so that they can explain it to the crowd.
Are you, okay. Great, okay, fantastic. Because I'm doing, I'm not, but doing it right now.
Instead of us trying to remember, we'll ask them.
Yeah. Okay, great.
All right. And I've had calls at home from people up on Lowry's Hill Road because they started moving things around and bringing in concrete trucks and stuff for Horseshoe Hill and they weren't aware that the building that had been approved.
The concrete trucks ain't work, actually weren't for the building. He put a patio on the back and he wants to apply for a permit to put it back for his pool. The only thing he's done up there is level some ground. He had one hole was in the wrong place and I told him, move the hole over and call me before you dig anymore so we can make sure it's set right. So that's the only thing that's been done with that.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I think, I think one thing came to mind as you were talking about the, the capacity and the interconnection cost that they offer to provide, which actually they don't typically do that.
I asked her, she told me.
Yeah.
She didn't have the number with her.
So one of the question, I think the, the basic issue for them and why they're requesting the variance is the size of the project would be probably half the size if they had to comply with the setbacks. The cost to interconnect is often the swing cost that makes or breaks these projects, right? Because it's, it's a fixed cost, it doesn't generate any additional revenue. I think one factor considered would be, factor considered is, you know, the econ, what happens to the economics of the project if they're limited to whatever footprint would be compliant? Because that does make that interconnection cost relevant, so that would, you know, what, what is the, is the, is the product economically viable?
Right.
Can they demonstrate that, that it probably limited is to what detail is because of business sensitive type of information? But, you know, can they demonstrate economic viability of the project with and without the variance? And you got this one number in the record here to help support that.
Yeah, I mean.
That, that kind of goes to, I think, is the first great theory in your typical area variance.
I mean, if, if you look at your worksheet for your motion.
Yeah.
I mean, you can check off yes to every single one. And I think that, you know, depending on which way you're going here, that's what you have to think about as well as, even if, even if it's ugly, even if it's noisy, all those things, we're here to talk about what variances are applied for. And we have to keep that in our frame of reference when we're acting on this application. And that's what we had asked Dwight to work into a template for a resolution because I don't want to miss anything. And we're paying him because he knows what he's doing, so we might as well take advantage of that. So there's like, you can fill in the blanks in here sort of on the motion that you would make. And, and it's, it's with approval or denial. Is that right?
The approval with conditions or denial.
Yeah, with conditions.
And then part of that is what are the conditions? If, if you're identifying things that are issues, and if you, that would be your conditions.
All right. Anything else on the solar farm? All right, Cory, Horseshoe Hill.
Questions for me, you want me to walk you through it?
Why don't you walk us through it quick?
Sure. So the, because this is located in a state-certified county agricultural district, there are certain protections afforded to agricultural uses like this. This has been determined by the Department of Ag and Markets to be a, an equine operation. It is a farming operation in a state-certified county agricultural district and therefore we cannot impose a burden on a farm operation in a county agricultural district. What we can do is hold them to the same standards that we hold all other people to. So we can't impose specific, more restrictive setbacks, for example, on a farm than would otherwise be required. But what we can do is what we're requiring here is there is a 30-foot building setback in this zoning district. There's also a setback of 100 feet for certain manure and other operations. The variances that they are asking are from those two provisions. There are essentially three structures that are within the 30-foot setback area. There is a manure bay, there is a stable building, and there is a equipment building. And so they are seeking area variances from the setback requirement that would otherwise be applicable to all other buildings. And unless we have some legitimate public safety, health and safety concern that can be explained and discussed, we are fairly limited in how we can treat these area variances. If something about the location of the manure bay, the stable building, or the equipment building, in your opinion, has some overarching public health concern, that's a concern that we should bring up at the meeting. We can have the applicant address that public health concern. And absent a strong public health concern, it's likely that the variance should be granted essentially. It's the same balancing of interest test under section 267B 3B of the town law. They have to weigh the benefit to the applicant against the detriment of the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. But we have to keep in mind that the state has a state policy to encourage farm operations in these state-certified county agricultural districts. And because they have been, they've gone to Ag and Markets already and Ag and Markets has issued a determination that they are a agricultural use as an equine operation. This is a right to farm community and so unless you can identify that public health and safety concern, my recommendation is to grant the area variances.
Is there anything to be said for the fact that they did all these things without permission or permits to begin with?
So here's what's so interesting is they would not be allowed to do a lot of the things that they are doing. For example, we, the town has already given them, as was stated earlier, a building permit for their riding arena. If this use ceases to be an agricultural use, if they cease to meet the requirements for an equine operation under the Ag and Markets law, that riding arena is no longer permitted on that property. So how do we deal with the fact that they already have done these things? They could be very well making an argument that they don't need these variances. They could say, building permits were issued for these structures, nobody appealed the issuance of those building permits, but they have essentially consented to.
There were building permits issued for the manure pit and the metal building?
I have to assume there were.
There, there was a building permit issued for the stable. It was on the plans. Building inspector at the time, for whatever reason, completely missed the setbacks for the stable building with the residents.
Yes.
And with the, with the machinery building. Those are about three feet short of the, of the distance. Well, the, the residence is in the stable, the other one's about 17 feet short of the distance. The manure bay, that I can't answer for because I looked and it's clear in the laws and it's existed that way way before that permit was issued. I know the building inspector at the time was one person, he was working 12 hours a day and he didn't have time to catch up to stuff that he should have. But that doesn't make it acceptable, but it did, I think at this point, we're trying to correct the issue for the miss.
Yeah. But I, I believe the manure bay is a new site.
There's a manure bay in the, in the stable itself and that's the one that was gone by, I believe.
No, this is the one that has a concrete.
There's a concrete manure bay that's within the 30-foot side yard setback.
Off to the right, in the back.
And, and what, what you're saying is correct, you're, you're both right. Because there are building permits that, we required them to refile building permit applications to evoke the jurisdiction of the zoning board. We said, look, you're going to have to put in building permit applications, they'll be denied. You can go to the zoning board for the relief that you need to authorize these.
Right.
I was sort of surprised that they consented or that they acquiesced to the 100-foot setback requirement for the agriculture and manure. I mean, they could have argued that that's unreasonably restrictive on a farm operation. But in any event, they're within the 30-foot setback. All three of these structures, the manure bay, the equipment building, and the stable building, are within the 30-foot side yard setback. And so whether you're an agricultural use, a residential use, or commercial use in this district, although you wouldn't be allowed to do commercial use in this district, so that's a bad analogy, but every structure must comply with the 30-foot side yard setback. That's how we're able to make them comply with it because that's the generally applicable setback standard. You, what you can't do, for example, is say, if you're a farm, your fence has to be a certain distance, whereas other fences, not for farms, don't have to be a certain distance, right? That would be unduly restrictive on a farm operation. What our authority is, because of the fact that they're an agricultural use, is we can hold them to the same standards we hold everyone else to. But absent an overriding public health and safety issue, we should be giving them the variances because they are agricultural uses in a state-certified agricultural district.
And it's, it makes it a little bit easier because they did refile and ask for the variances. Because there is a section in the, the building codes that could get real nasty because if information is missed or a permit is issued improperly, it shall be revoked. The same with the C of O, it shall be revoked.
Right.
Now you're looking at seizing operations, they gotta move out of there until it's all corrected.
Well, there's also penalties too, fines, they could be revoked.
There's penalties too, but it's, it could get real litigious and real nasty
Right.
in a hurry if they hadn't come this route. So, I mean, that's up to the board to determine.
Well, I'm sure that they do that.
Yeah.
I mean.
The, the writing on the wall, I'm just going to level with you, be very blunt. If we deny the variances, they're going to go immediately back to these Ag and Markets
Right, I know.
and then Ag and Markets is gonna issue an order saying that we were unduly restrictive on the farm operation.
Right.
What we were able to do is condition the building permit for the riding arena on annual evidence of annual compliance with the Ag and Markets law. They have to have at least 10 horses, they have to get at least, I think it's $10,000 a year in income. They have to meet those requirements. If at any time they cease meeting those requirements, that, that riding arena can't be used for that use anymore. And would need variances before it could be used for anything.
And I believe one of the, the conditions is they cannot have horse shows or anything with a proximate audience there?
I don't recall that.
Because if they do, that kicks in another section of the, the code that requires that building to now be sprinkled.
Yeah, see, this is where you see.
And I don't think they can get around that.
This is where you see the confluence of uniform fire prevention and building code issues and zoning issues, which are related, but code enforcement officer handles the state code issues, I handle the local zoning issues.
And along with that, we have to make sure as code enforcement that they meet the zoning requirements. That's why my letter comes in with what they're not compliant with, with local zoning or anything else that they need to get variance for.
Someone could say, this doesn't seem fair, right? Like, it doesn't seem fair that if you're a farm, even if you buy a really narrow but long, right? But the fact is, is that this was approved as a agricultural district. Not an agricultural zoning district, but as a county agricultural district under the Agriculture and Markets law. And because of that, there is a presumption that they should be allowed to do these agricultural operations. So it kind of doesn't feel fair, it kind of doesn't feel right. But it was done because the state's policy is to promote agricultural uses in agricultural districts. I don't want to get far afield, but you're likely to hear the solar developer say that the state has a policy of renewable energy of 70% by.
Excited.
Right? And so you're going to hear a very similar, you're hearing a very similar argument for them, but in this case,
Yeah.
solar doesn't yet have a, a special law which gives a right to solar law, like there is a right to farm law.
Yeah.
And so if it feels a little unfair, it is a little unfair because they're putting, they're purposefully putting the thumb on the scale to help farming operations. Because the policy is, if you have an ag district, ag uses should be allowed there.
Yeah.
Question, there was a, if I remember correctly, there was a question from one of the homeowners about the fence and like a concern. Their grandkid, you know, electric fence.
And the front fence is my concern too.
Yes.
Is there a way we can request, acquire a, a different type of fencing within that section? Whether it's 50 feet, 100 feet, whatever it is?
So.
That front section is the one that.
Well, it's, it's 2.2 feet off the property line where these people next door have a playset for their grandchildren and it's electric fence.
I know. So here's the issue, here's the issue. The law in New York gives you the authority to impose conditions that are directly related and incidental to your approval. That's the standard in law.
Yes, it's a stipulation.
Directly related and incidental, right?
Okay.
They don't need a variance for their fencing.
Right.
So it's hard to say that a condition on this fence is directly related and incidental. So, it's hard to say that a condition on this fence is directly related and incidental to the manure bay, the storage building, and the stable being closer than would otherwise be allowed. How do we say that a fence condition is directly related and incidental to those things? It's kind of a tough thing to marry up. But, the law, attorney for the applicant did say that they would be willing to do additional screening in the area of the fencing. And so, even though our power is limited to impose conditions directly related and incidental, that doesn't mean they can't agree to do things, right?
Right, so we can ask, we can ask.
We can absolutely ask, and if they voluntarily agree to a condition, that's different than our authority to impose conditions.
Yeah.
Right, actually, we put that in the.
Well, yeah, well, that's what I have, I, I want them to do, I want them actually to revoke that.
Just that protection, please.
So, so the question then comes, would you be, would you be willing to do this?
Or set it back. Yes.
And if they say yes, then we can impose that as in a condition that they've consented to.
Yeah.
Okay.
They've consented to that condition.
We can try, I know.
And so, ask the question is.
I, I, I'm not happy with the manure bay either, that close.
Yeah, that's, that's close.
That's thirty feet from where they live.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's horses underneath, but I'm assuming that they, I, I don't know, it's.
You're talking about the large and medium or whatever, the fact that they live above the field?
Yeah.
Literally, it's a chill.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have horses, I don't mind, I don't want a manure pile thirty feet from my house.
I know you. I know.
Or right on there.
I mean, there's so many things wrong with their project from a horse person, it's.
Unless they, unless you can, unless you can establish with facts that that creates a public health and safety issue.
They're gonna be sorry. Well, it is to them, but.
Right, they're, they're doing it to themselves, right? They're not doing it to somebody else.
It's not to the public, you know, it's all for the people.
Right.
You know, I it ain't how I do my stuff, that's all I.
So, I, I just want to acknowledge a few things.
We can.
It's kind of not fair, but that's the way it is, right? If we, you, you can absolutely deny these variances. If you do deny the variances, I think in all likelihood, the state, Department of Ag and Markets is going to say that that was unduly restrictive on the farm operation. So, if you want to draw a line in the sand and deny it and say, to, and say to the people of the town of Austin, we said no, but Ag and Markets came down on us and said we have to do it? I mean, it seems, you, you could do that, but I'm telling you, where I think it's gonna come down is even if you said no, Ag and Markets is gonna say yes.
Just like they did to the arena.
And, and just like Dwight was explaining with the variances for the solar farm, I, I just want you to keep this very important thing in context. It's not a question of whether they have a manure bay or don't have a manure bay. The harm that you're evaluating is a manure bay thirty feet away from the lot line or a manure bay twelve feet away from the lot line? What is the harm with the manure bay, I just want to get that one right, do you know how far the manure bay is?
The manure bay is really close to their house when I was up there.
I thought it's like fifteen feet.
I couldn't believe.
I think, I think it's behind the, the maintenance building.
Right, it's behind that.
Yeah, it's on the side of it, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's right center of the.
If you look down, it's behind the.
Manure bay, manure bay is twelve feet.
The bandage is rolling away.
The, the manure bay is twelve feet away where it should be thirty feet away, so we're talking about eighteen feet. It's eighteen feet closer to the lot line than would otherwise be allowed. So, the question before you is not, what's the harm of there being a manure bay? It's what's the harm of a manure bay being twelve feet away instead of thirty feet away? What's the harm of that eighteen feet? That's really the question that, that you're evaluating when you're balancing, doing the balancing of interest test.
Right.
And that's a really fine point, that's really important for zoning boards to remember. It's not manure bay or no manure bay, it's thirty foot away manure bay or twelve foot manure bay.
Right.
Yeah, that's the only thing you're voting.
It's the only thing you're voting.
Right.
There's, there's one other point, and you may marry it or not, they've got a manure management plan. He has said, well, we have somebody come every couple days or once a week to pick up the manure. But how do we know he's actually doing that?
Right.
Does he have a receipt?
Is there a record of it or?
I haven't seen any of that.
And he spreads manure, but he doesn't have a manure spreader. He spreads it with a bucket, which is ineffective.
I think he's up in the back of his property and it's going down the, down the bank.
Yeah, it's, it's not, that's not how you spread manure.
But that's, regardless, proving what's happening to it.
It's. It's just.
Yeah.
No, that's a good point, let me see some receipts or something. Prove that they're, how they, you know, how they, that we're doing, that ten horses, ten thousand dollars a year, that, you know, you have receipts and you submit them manually, is that?
Well, it's the guy that has.
It doesn't even go in order.
It's Gannon that was taking away the contractor.
There's some, there's some conditions I have to, to meet that the permit was issued under, that he has to abide by yearly. And I think I'm allowed to go anytime to visit the site during the course of that year, during their operations.
Do those seven conditions are offered?
I don't, I can try and pull up the, the, uh, the permit, because Corey sent me an email with the, the conditions on it.
Is there anything?
I'll, I'll look back for your email.
Yeah.
And see if I can pull it up, because those are printed right on the back of the permit. So, he knows exactly what's required.
And I socialized those permit conditions with the applicant's attorney and they agreed to those permit conditions.
Okay.
Just like I socialized the notice with her, the required variances, she agreed to all of them.
I think we can also.
So, we're proceeding on the same page.
Remember, we can also remind them that this is their, again, this is their community, you have to be surrounded by your neighbors. And do you want to live in the community that you're currently creating?
Well.
I'll, I'll pull that email up and get it done before their hearing, so I can associate and submit it to you.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna go pull that stuff up now.
I was only sort of tongue in cheek when I was saying maybe Horseshoe Hill could go first, is, is it not gonna be quicker or are they both gonna be long?
I'm sorry.
They're both gonna be long.
I mean, you're paying for it, so it's fine with me.
I know. It's, it's way, it is on the agenda, so we have to follow.
I mean, it's not unusual for the chairperson to change an agenda order.
I know, but it's, there's people expecting.
I defer to.
And they made arrangements, such as your face and.
I defer to.
Yeah, I'm gonna choose. Um.